Are we ready?
It's about for state.
Good evening. We will call our regularly scheduled meeting to order and we will begin with an invocation. And Father Salter with our Lady of Sorrows Catholic Church has agreed graciously, and while he makes his way here, we'll -- to the microphone, we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if all of you would stand with me, please. Father.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord and Father, we thank you that you promised us that where two or three are gathered, you are there in their midst. Lord Jesus, we welcome you amongst us today and celebrate the gift of life that you have lavished upon each of us. We ask that you would open our ears so that we may hear your voice. Heavenly Father, we come to you today as members of the Homewood Council members, asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, oh Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect and improve the life standards of the people in Homewood. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Jesus, open our spirits and minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom and your wonderful love. We ask all this in the glorious name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you, sir. Ms. Salter, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCleskey.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here. So we have a quorum. We're going to carry over the reading of the minutes from September 18th and council meeting of September 25th. We've got a couple of board vacancies that we need to address. The Ward Four Abatement Board, do you have a?
Yes, we would like to appoint Ms. Frances Allison to the Ward Four Abatement Board position.
All right, so we have motion for Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And Ms. Salter, if you'll let Ms. Allison know.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate her willingness to serve. And also, there is a Homewood Environmental Commission at Large Position, and I understand we had an applicant for that, and?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. The application period, of course, closed for that today, and we did have one applicant, Mrs., I'm sure I'm going to butcher this last name, but Amber Kustos.
I think you're correct.
Well, that's good enough for me, Mr. Chairman. She is the Coordinator for Environmental Stewardship and Campus Enhancement at Samford University, so I would suggest that she is qualified, obviously, to be on the commission, and I would place her name in nomination.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that, too, is unanimous, and if you'll let her know also. So that's a good thing. All right. We've got two additions to the agenda for tonight. Both are committee referral agenda items. One is 131017, which is request for consideration of a resolution to request that the Alabama Legislature take action relieving the city of Homewood from the application of the LID bill. This is requested by Alex Wyatt and will be referred to finance. The second item is 141017, which is request for consideration for a directional change to one-way for Reece Street. This will be referred to Planning and Development, requested by Mr. Thames. Are there any other items to add? If there are not, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for modification.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wright, second from Ms. Andrus. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just want to, for the record, the past two meetings, we averaged about 50 of these additions. So two is exciting tonight.
I understand.
And Mr. Wright did a great job of negotiating those 50 items.
Please don't blame the sitting president for the number of amendments that took place.
Anyway, sorry to delay the vote. I just wanted to make that comment, that this is really exciting tonight.
Well, you know, I certainly have some comments to make at the end about Mr. Wright's holding of this chair, but we'll save that anyway. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, good. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion for Mr. Jones.
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right. Old business. 120517, request, public hearing set for November 13th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of a petition of annexation for the property located at 1400 Shades Crest Road, requested by Melba Kane, Jolene Mills, and our city clerk. And this was carried over from 9/1817 for public hearing. So that is set. 190817, request for consideration of changing the construction working hours defined in Section 5.9.1 Regulations Concerning the Issuance of Building and Construction Permits, requested by Andy Waltney. Does PND have a report for this?
Yes, sir. Committee met and recommended approval of changing.
All right. Changing construction hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays with special approval needed for exterior Sunday hours. Counselor Andrus, second. And I'm not sure who motioned in the first place. It was five to zero, but if Mr. Waltney has anything to add?
No, I emailed the summary of the changes to everybody last week, and if you have any questions, I'll provide them.
The summary that you sent indicated there'd be no work on Sunday without written.
Yeah.
It didn't distinguish between exterior and interior.
Yeah, the way it reads, I copied the verbiage from the ordinance directive. So all work is, exterior and interior prohibited on Sunday unless it's all work outside those hours, that's the other part of the document.
So, Mr. Kendrick, does that mean we've got an ordinance ready?
Yes, sir, we do. That's what the ordinance that was sent to you says.
Okay, good.
But I want to make sure that that's what you wanted.
Yes. All right, good. First reading, sir.
It's an ordinance to modify Section 5-9, which is one entitled Regulations Concerning the Issuance of Building and Construction Permits. The sole change, and I'll read that, all of the provisions of the existing ordinance remain the same, except all permits will have the following legend. All work, exterior and interior, authorized under this permit shall be performed only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. And Sunday, all work is prohibited unless written, except as granted by the building inspector or other official of the city of Homewood. Application for exception must be made to the building inspector of the city of Homewood. All of the provisions of that section remain in full force and effect, other than as specifically read before. Section 3, if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all of the provisions remain in full force and effect. Section 4, if any rules or regulations are in conflict with the provisions of this amendment, they have declared null and void. Section 5, that the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Ms. Salter, roll call.
Mr. Waltney.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes. So this is passed on a 10-0 vote, and we will move on to 060917, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1801 Kensington Road a public nuisance due to violations of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. And we will start with a report from Mr. Cook.
All right. Notices were sent out. The owner is Barbara Statham, River Ford Circle in Hoover. The notice was sent out and signed for, noticing them that the property was up for discussion as far as declaring it a public nuisance. The last letter that went out, have not got confirmation back on it, but it went out letting them know of tonight's public hearing. You should have the pictures in front of you, I guess, on the screen there. The front yard has been addressed to some extent. That's not the big issue. The big issue is the backyard. It has had very little done to it.
All right, thanks, sir. We will open this public hearing and ask, is there anyone that would like to speak to this matter? Yes, ma'am. Come forward. We need you to give your name and your address here with Ms. Salter, and then you're welcome to speak. Mr. Cook, if you'll turn the floor over to her. you live.
I'm Beth Wilson. I live at 1803 Kensington Road, which is the house to the left of the Statham property. And there's definitely an overgrowth of weeds, which the council has recognized. The backyard, there's also insects and rodents. There's now trash along the sidewalk and along the driveway. The soffit's falling in, and part of the siding is also down, so there's more than just an issue of overgrowth.
Do you know if the homes currently, if anyone's living there or not?
No one's lived there for over two years.
Okay.
And the last I talked to Ms. Statham, I don't think she was probably her, all of her mental faculties together.
I see.
You know, it's become a problem for me personally, because I am the next-door neighbor. I've had to pay extra to get, you know, weed bond treatment, grass treatment. The fence is starting to fall in. I've been told there's nothing I can do because the fence is on her property. There's a large tree that's growing at an angle over my house. There's a concern that it's a hazard. I've already had one neighbor's tree fall on my house and do 28,000 in damage, and this tree is significantly large as well. So, as well as the public matter, which affects a number of my neighbors back there, I mean, there are also issues that affect me being the next-door neighbor.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I appreciate that information.
What is the next step?
Well, we're going to see what Mr. Cook's recommendation is, and then the council will consider declaring it a nuisance, and we'll go from there, okay? We have a clearly defined legal process we have to follow.
How do I find out what that process is?
Well, you're going to find out in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, can I, can we ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Do you know who the owner is or the family? Has any of the family members?
Mr. Cook, just tell us.
Scott's identified him. He's found him. He knows where they are.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
And they are not responding?
Well, they sent over.
Did they sign for one of the certified letters that I sent?
They've done some, they've sent some people over to do some cleanup in the front lawn. That's about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Don De Metz, I'm at 1800 Kensington, which is directly across the street from the property, under consideration. Well, appreciate you getting the car towed away because I considered that a threat to the livelihood of my house, my family, and anybody walking by the street, because as you probably see, there's a steep hill. That car was parked there for in excess of a year, probably multiple years, and it always concerned me that the brakes would give out one day and the car would come rolling down and take a child or pedestrian out. So, thank you very much for getting that. But, yes, the, I mean, I think it, I don't know if public nuisance has a legal definition. It probably does, but.
It does.
I would think that by looking at the property, you can see it is a public nuisance. They did come by, maybe a month and a half or two months ago, and do some cleanup, but it was somewhat cursory and hasn't been cleaned since then. You know, it's a mess, and it's not getting any better. It won't get any better unless, you know, the family that owns the property can be encouraged to come out and do something. Our neighbors next door had their house, you know, for sale for over a million dollars. I'm thinking, you know, anybody coming up to buy it, you know, spend a million dollars on the house, will drive directly by this house. It looks like it could be on the verge of falling down, so it's definitely, I think, detracted from the neighborhood, which is generally nice. Anyway, I would be in full support of having the property declared a public nuisance.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? If not, we will close this public hearing. Mr. Cook, what would be your recommendation?
To declare it a public nuisance, but just so that the neighbors will know that all we can do is go on the property and clean up the excessive growth, and I'll take care of the litter as well. You know, it's not going to look like the rest of the neighborhood when we get through, but it will be a big improvement, and they'll do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. We appreciate that.
Hey, Scott, I do have one quick question for him, just because we've been dealing with this for a long time, haven't we, Scott? They're up to date on taxes, as far as we know, correct? Yes.
They are current in their taxes, yes.
They're maintaining the taxes on the property. We got the car hauled away.
Right.
Have they expressed any?
No contact with me whatsoever.
They just signed for the letters and sent the two guys.
Sent somebody out, do the front yard, and off they go.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Cook, while you were on site, I know you were looking for excessive growth, but what about structurally? How does the house look, or is it open at all to the?
It does not appear to be open. When I was up there today, there is a light on in the house, so there's still electricity on. The gutters are full of debris. There is some, probably some siding issues with decay, falling, but that's about it. Structurally, it's still a good sound house. I'm sure it doesn't look good on inside.
Mr. Cook, can you ascertain whether other utilities are in there or not?
Well, like I say, I know the power's on.
Well, I know the power is, but I'm obviously thinking about water and?
I mean, I could go to the street and look at the, see if the meter's still in place or taken out. That's about it. If you call the waterworks, they don't give you that information. It's kind of a privacy thing, whether somebody's paying their bill or not.
I understand. But you can ascertain that?
Yeah.
With a little investigation?
Yeah, I can.
Good. We'll do that. Yes, sir.
Is the city able to do anything about the tree that was mentioned?
Personally, I don't think so. That's an issue between two property owners. You know, I'm not playing attorney here, but I've, in the past, recommended that the property owner who's fearful that this tree might fall on them, just send a certified letter to them, letting them know of the possible danger.
Unfortunately, it's a private matter between two property owners. I understand the concern, but there's nothing legally the city can do for private property other than statutory remedies that the state legislates to give, is clean up weeds and bushes and things like that. Certainly, you may well be served to write them a letter, put them on notice, so that if something does fall, then you have maybe a possibility of claiming against them. Otherwise, it's an act of God, and insurance is going to be treated as your problem, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right.
But to elaborate on the process, you know, after we clean it up, and maybe, Scott, you can march through this, I mean, there's a cost that's incurred for doing that.
That's correct. Once we clean it up, then we'll tabulate, you know, the hours, man-hours, and the cost. The city adds another 50% to that. We send a bill out to the owner, giving them 30 days to pay it. If they don't pay it, then I'll be, we're coming back to y'all through the city clerk to place that lien as a weed lien on the property tax.
All right, council, you've heard Mr. Cook's recommendation. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I would move to approve this house being declared a public nuisance.
All right. If we have a motion for Ms. Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wyatt. Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that will be Resolution 17167. And your charge is to go forth, Mr. Cook, on that.
Scott, when will that happen? When will the crew be able to get out there, probably?
I'll just have to get with them tomorrow and notify them that y'all declared it a public nuisance, and they'll just work it in their schedule when they can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. 070917, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to set a public hearing to, excuse me, for consideration to consider declaring the property located at 1,000 Forest Brook Drive a public nuisance due to violation of the ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. We'll start with you, Mr. Cook.
All right, sir. Yes, this property was, has been vacant for probably over a year now. It's my understanding it was for sale. This is the second time that I've sent them notice. This, the second time, both certified letters came back undeliverable. Since the time that I brought it to y'all's attention, the house has sold, and a new owner has come in and taken care of the front yard, the whole yard.
Oh, wow.
And doing a remodeling job on the inside, so that's a good thing.
Yes. All right. So, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to say anything about this? There being none, we will close this public hearing. And here are your recommendations, sir.
Motion to drop. Like, recommendation to drop, excuse me.
All right. So, council, you hear Mr. Cook's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment before we vote.
Sure.
I want to thank Mr. Cook for his help with this. I have been bothering him with this house.
No bother.
This house has been a persistent problem for two years, long before I was on the council. As community president, I went out there and cut the grass myself one time because there were so many complaints about the house. And so, I am very hopeful that the new owner will take their responsibilities as a homeowner in Homewood a little bit more seriously than the previous owners. So, thank you, Mr. Cook, though, for your diligence on that. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. So again, we have a motion for Ms. Andrus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wolverton. Any further discussion? Thank you for what you've done, Mr. Higginbotham. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is 17168. We'll move on to 080917, public hearing set for tonight to consider the property located at 1602 Ridge Road a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir. The property is owned by a James Dobbs at 1602 Ridge Road. The taxes are being paid by Turner Farms LLC out of Birmingham. Notices were sent to both parties of tonight's hearing. Both parties signed for their certified letter. This is the, I believe, the third time that I've come before y'all on this property. I think twice before, the city declared it a public nuisance, and we went up there and took care of it. Mr. Dobbs did call me today and wanted to meet with me, which I did prior to the council meeting. He wanted me to express his concern that he would like to have till December to take care of the property, make sure that it's done. He is on a fixed income and living back in the house now, and he did not feel like he should come up before y'all and speak for himself, so he asked me to just, you know, ask that you give him till December.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, let us open this public hearing and ask, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? There being none, we will close this public hearing and ask Mr. Cook for his recommendation.
I was afraid you was going to ask me that.
That's part of your?
You can throw it back to us.
That's in your job description, sir.
Just, if you want to, you can point at us and we'll?
No, that's fine. Under the circumstances, I mean, the yard has continuously been a problem. Neighbors have complained for years and years. I don't see where it can be done by December. I mean, it's, it'd probably be tough for us to even get out there and get some of this done by December, with a full crew. But, anyway, so my recommendation would be go ahead and declare it a public nuisance.
You said this, has this been the same owner the previous two times?
Yes. Yes. And Bruce, if you don't mind, can I address this as well?
Sure.
Scott and Alex and I have been dealing with this for the several, past several years, with regular complaints from neighbors all around the property. He is living in the house with no electricity and no water service. We've had the health department go out. He did not allow them on the property, so that did not go our way. We have been working diligently to try to do something about this, and he's not going to do it by December, so we need to declare this a nuisance and see what else we can do to address this for the neighbors, because it's a problem.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to this matter on the council?
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned Turner Farms.
Yes.
What is their, who are they now? Do they own the property?
No. No, the owner is Mr. Dobbs.
Okay, the owner is Mr. Dobbs.
It appears that Mr. Dobbs was unable to pay his property taxes at one time, so an investor purchased, paid his property. an investor purchased, paid his property taxes for him, and has a property tax lien on the property themselves. So, since they have an interest in the property, I have to send them notice as well.
Got it. All right. So, they just have a property tax lien on it?
Right.
All right. And has... I just mentioned this, you know, DHR could be contacted, and maybe y'all have already done that, Barry, so I'm sorry if I mentioned that.
No, we thought, when we started the health department, we thought that might be our avenue to getting DHR involved, because we felt like they would have an obligation, knowing that he's living there in those kind of conditions, to notify DHR. But when he didn't allow them on the property, they left and aren't going back. So, I guess that now becomes incumbent on us to call DHR, and I'm not sure how that process would work.
That'll be new to me, but I'll start digging.
We're learning all kinds of new things, aren't we, Scott?
That is one of the things we're looking into.
Well, it could be that, yeah, okay. I'll defer to you lovely four representatives, but the adjacent property owners may want to get DHR to come look in there. So, okay.
Would that be the process?
Well, you gotta have a petition.
Well, I mean, there's three attorneys in this presence, so...
If the house is not habitable, we can order him out. The health department has a right to go on the property. The reason they didn't do that is because they typically don't, not because they can't. If you just let not to...
And I suggested to them, hey, you...
They're very rarely helpful to anyone on the property.
I suggest to them, in the future, call the police department, you know, we'll be glad to escort them.
If the habitability of the house is an issue, ability inspection, have a right on the property to do that.
Well, Wyatt...
If it's unsafe or dilapidated, we can then take some action. But short of that kind of finding an opinion that it's unsafe, then you have really no other option other than just weed or...
Well, Wyatt and Nick Hill have been out to the property. Nick told him, told Mr. Dobbs, that he would not allow the fire department to enter the house because it's unsafe, if there were to be some sort of thing.
Is he right to go on the premises because...
No, I mean, they did go on the premises. That's why I'm telling you. He told Mr. Dobbs that he wouldn't allow his firefighters to go into the house because of the dangerous conditions of the house.
Well, then it might be uninhabitable. I'm not confident to tell you that.
Yeah.
Building inspection department making a search. I don't want to leave that to them.
And Mike, if necessary, one of these interested parties, they can go out there with law enforcement to make sure they gain access in a proper manner. Right?
Sure. All right. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to declare it a public nuisance.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wyatt. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This will be Resolution 17-169, and it is...
We don't have a resolution on the draw.
We don't?
No, it's just dropping the lien.
Okay.
The resolution, we need to take some action.
But I thought we just took action.
We did. We declared the...
The one before that we dropped.
Oh, that's right. So, it's 168. I'm sorry. You're right. My fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you keeping me straight. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. 10-09-17. Public hearing set for tonight. For consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1745 Oxmore Road, requested by Alex Wyatt. Report from special issues. Please reporting out special issues.
That's me. I'm sorry. I was talking to Mr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We met as a committee last Monday night, and this is the property that's going to be, or is already, a Pilate studio on Oxmore Road. The owners met with concerned neighbors from Mayfair Circle about the size of that sign, and they came to an agreement about the size. And we sent it out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Five to zero, sorry.
We will open this public hearing and certainly ask anyone who would like to address this to come forward. Yes, ma'am. Your name is?
My name is Tish Tillis. I'm one of the partners at Studio G Pilates.
Yes, ma'am.
We requested a five-and-a-half-foot sign based on the fact that the way the property is at a slope with a monument sign, it doesn't sit up very high, and you can't see it very well from the street. We came forward several months ago, and the property owners at Mayfair said they would agree to a four-and-a-half-foot sign. So, we went and had our sign company mock up a four-and-a-half-foot sign, and it really kind of depleted what we were looking for within the sign. So, we had him do a mock-up of the five-and-a-half-foot sign. We placed it in the area where the sign will be built and had the Mayfair residents come over. When they stood at the exit of Mayfair where our sign was, they noticed they couldn't even see the five-and-a-half-foot sign because of the bushes that were built there. So, they told us they no longer had an issue with it, and they would not fight the variance.
Do you have a copy of the sign?
We had it at the meeting. I don't know if we have it to show on the screen. It's a circular sign, so that's why the size...
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Mr. Kendrick has to have a copy.
Yes, we do have a... do we have a copy from the meeting on Monday night?
I'll have to check and see that it's not...
Okay.
We may have to ask you to get us another copy of that.
Okay, I can send another copy.
Anything else you'd like to say about that?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, ma'am. Anyone else? All right. If there's no one else, then we will close this public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that will be Resolution 169. All right. 13-09-17. Request for consideration for Phase Two Greenway Project, requested by Jennifer Andrews, referred from Public Works on 9/25/17. And a report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the Finance Committee met last Monday night and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the $5,500 from the capital budget Greenway line item to acquire track number seven in the right-of-way. This is an 80-20, part of the 80-20 grant match. Motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham, seconded by Counselor Thames, and again, that was four to zero coming out of Finance to approve that expenditure.
All right. Thank you. So therefore, we have a motion from Finance. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Ms. Andrews. And any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is Resolution 17-170, and it is approved unanimously. We'll move on to 15-09-17. Request for consideration of traffic and safety concerns on Kent Drive, requested by Andrew Wolverton, carried over from 9/25/17. And we will start with a report from Public Safety, and who is doing that with...
I'm covering that tonight.
All right.
Yes, sir. We met and heard from Mrs. McGrath about some recommendations for locations for crosswalks specifically. This ordinance would address Cobb Street and South Point, Cobb and Southwood, Kent and Cobb, Allen and Grove, Kent and Montgomery. In addition, we discussed, holding meetings with the school about resource officers and perhaps a better way to move children through the area. We also recommended a traffic study in the area to see if there's any changes that could be made to help flow, and recommended adding patrols until this resolution was passed, adding the crosswalks. Counselor Wolverton motioned and was... that's twice now. I only have my second on here. I don't know who the first was, but someone made a motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thames. We appreciate you stepping up in Mr. McCluskey's absence.
Sure.
And Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to provide for the installation of five additional pedestrian crosswalks across Cobb Street, Kent Drive, Allen Avenue, and Kent Lane as described here and below. Be run by the City Council as follows. The chief of police shall be directed to install five pedestrian crosswalks at the locations described here and below and as directed by the chief of police. A, pedestrian crosswalk across Cobb Street in order to provide access to the sidewalk connecting Cobb Street with South Point Drive as depicted in Exhibit A. B, a pedestrian crosswalk across Cobb Street in order to provide access to the sidewalk connecting Southwood Road to Cobb Drive as described in Exhibit A. C, a pedestrian crosswalk across Kent Drive at the intersection of Kent Drive with Cobb Street as depicted in Exhibit A. D, a pedestrian crosswalk across Allen Avenue at the intersection of Allen Avenue with Grove Street as depicted in Exhibit A. And E, a pedestrian crosswalk across Kent Lane in order to provide access to the sidewalk connecting Kent Lane with Kent... excuse me, Montgomery Lane with Kent Lane as described in Exhibit A. Section two, that all drivers of motor vehicles defined in the Highway Code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined here and above. Three, that any person found guilty of violation of provision of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances as amended. Section four, that all ordinances contrary to provisions of this ordinance are specifically repealed. Section five, any part of provision or order declared to be unconstitutional by the Court of Comptess jurisdiction, all other parts of provision or order shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor or as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Roll call, please, ma'am.
We got a motion for that.
No, I'm sorry. Motion for unanimous consent with a second?
So moved.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Wyatt. Excuse me. Sleep deprivation. Roll call.
Mr. Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes. So, this will be Ordinance 2673, and the chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before I make a motion, I just want to be clear. So, the... what we're voting on is the ordinance that was read tonight, in addition to the other items that came out of Public Safety. Is that correct? Approval of everything that came out of Public Safety?
We're voting on an approval of the ordinance strictly, yes, at this point.
Addressing the crosswalk.
Addressing the crosswalks.
Correct.
Are the other items going to be coming up at another time?
I think those are recommendations, and it's upon the council to make those happen in the meeting with the schools.
The approval of the ordinance is the first step, is what my understanding is. Now, if we're talking about a traffic study, we need to address that with the Finance Committee, certainly. And I do think we need to schedule a meeting as expeditiously as we can with the school officials.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I guess my concern is I just want to make sure that we don't let the other items that were discussed fall into practice. And I think this ordinance is great, and I think we need all these crosswalks. Don't get me wrong. Just want to make sure that we do work on the other items that are in there. And if there's something I need to do specifically to expedite that, I would appreciate any direction from the chair as to what that would be.
Okay. I agree with you, Mr. Higginbotham. And what we'll do is we'll reach out to the school officials first, and then we'll certainly talk with the chief. And lastly, look at the funding of a traffic study, okay? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Didn't... just to clarify, didn't we leave part of this in committee as well?
Yes, it's carried over in committee as well.
It's carried over, okay.
Okay.
So, the item will go what?
Thank you. I wasn't here. I didn't know that. Thank you. Okay, good. All right. So, back to 2673, a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wyatt. All right. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes. So, that is unanimous, 10-0. 2673 is passed. All right. 18-09-17. Request to approve expenditures of Exhibit A from HPM Management on behalf of the Board of Education from Construction Fund. Mr. Jones, carried over from 9/25. Report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Well, I would like to request that we carry this over again. Pending, we have a meeting coming up on Thursday between Ms. Salter and JJ and some of the schools officials. So, I would ask that we carry this over so that we can let them have that meeting and address those items.
So done. We'll carry it over, okay? Thank you. 19-09-17. Request for consideration of an ABC050 retail beer off premises only, and an ABC070 retail table wine off premises for M&amp;A International Market LLC, DBA. M&amp;A International Market located at 250 Green Springs Highway, requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk. Public Safety, Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted four to zero recommending approval. Motion made by Counselor Wyatt, seconded by Counselor Andrews.
All right. So, therefore, again, that's a motion from Public Safety. And any further discussion on that particular item? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that, too, is passed unanimously, okay? 23-09-17. Public hearing set for October 23 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1760 Oxmore Road. Vanessa McGrath, and requested by... and we will carry this over for the public hearing set, therefore. 25-09-17. Request for consideration for ADA transition plan, requested by Vanessa McGrath in our BEZ Department. Report from P&amp;D, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir. The committee heard from Nathan Currie of Saint Associates regarding the sidewalk repair for compliance. Counselor Andrews made a motion to recommend setting a public hearing tonight, which was required. It was seconded by Mr. Wyatt, and it was four to zero vote.
All right. So, we have the motion from Planning and Development. Any further discussion?
Mr. Limbaugh, based on the recommendation and the part of the plan, that public hearing would be scheduled at least 30 days from now, so that'd be November 13.
So, you're saying that the public hearing... okay, were we setting... I'm sorry, were we setting a public hearing?
Yes.
The committee wanted you to set it tonight.
Their report recommends a time for public input.
Then we will set that for November 13, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., okay? All right. Thank you. All right. Committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from...
Second.
Ms. Smith. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So be it. We'll move on to other new business. Request to set a public hearing and referral to special issues for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 112 Hollywood Boulevard, requested by Christopher Allison, Wyatt Pugh, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. And we will set that public hearing for 08-10-17 on the 23rd of October at 6:00 p.m. All right. 09-10-17. Request for consideration to set a public hearing to declare property located at 2900 16th Place South a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth, requested by Mr. Scott Cook, our code enforcement with the police department. And that, too, will be set for October 23, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. All right. 10-10-17. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Homewood Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 1718 services and funding, requested by Melody Salter, our finance director. I will point out that this is already part of the budget for 2017-2018, and the chair would welcome a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wyatt?
Second.
Second from Mr. Thames. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 17-171. Is that correct?
That's what I got, 171.
That's what I've got. And that is passed unanimously. We will move on to 11-10-17. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Jetty Trip Media for fiscal year 1718 website and social media services, requested by Brian Wallace, Melody Salter, our finance director. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wyatt? There's your birthday gift to me, sir.
I was the second, and Barry was trying to take that away from me. I just worked for the record.
Thank you, sir. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye to get me out of this.
Aye.
Aye, and that is 17-172. Finally, 12-10-17, quest for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of September 25th, 2017 through October 8th, 2017, requested by our City Treasurer and the Finance Committee, Ms. Smith?
Now, this is another birthday present for Mr. Wright.
Okay. Mr. Wright, please step right in.
Had a happy Sunday, and, so it has come back around to me, unfortunately.
It has. It's all about you, sir.
But, a big thanks to Melody, I had a question, we got them all answered, I think we got everything straightened out, including we're adding some, some expenditures for payments to the Picking in the Park musicians, and also thanks to Berkley and to Debbie Fout and probably some others. So we've got them all straightened out, and all good to go for vouchers from September 25th through October 8th, so I would ask for a move for approval.
So your, your motion is approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous, and that's Resolution 17-173. We come to the point where, Mayor, we welcome your comments.
As do I.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I did, we did manage to get a whole contingent of Homewoodians back from this pleasure trip, so that's a good thing. Mr. Gwaltney?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, Mr. Thames, how many committees are you setting for?
Well, I guess Public Safety and P&amp;D, I'm not going to be here next Monday night, so I don't really care what time they meet. Yeah.
I'm so glad that you recorded that, thank you.
P, I would much rather be here, I'd like to be in Atlanta. P&amp;D, I guess at 5:00, there's just one item, so 15 minutes, and then I guess Public Safety...
Well, wait, wait a minute, hold on, let's stop. Finance for the foreseeable future is locked into 5:00 p.m.
It's just not fair.
It, it's...
One of the perks of sitting on this end of it.
Listen closely.
That's right.
The President of the Council approved this, so, okay.
Okay.
How, how long do you think you're going to need this time, Mr. Jones?
Thirty minutes, Ron.
All right, 30, we'll get it.
P&amp;D at 5:30, and then Public Safety at 5:45, looking at Patrick's agenda, he'll, he'll need 30 minutes.
Okay. Anything else that you've got, Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham?
I'll take a half.
I just did. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't have anything special, I just want to point out that Alex was referred to as lovely this evening, along with Barry earlier.
Wait, what? What did he say? What did he say?
That's right. There could be worse, Barry. If I'm the one that said it, I'm sleep deprived.
I'm glad it was on the record, hey.
And I want to say happy birthday to Peter.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Jones?
It happens when you get older.
Oh, I see, welcome back.
Thank you.
We missed you, and I hope you had a good time, so, and Mr. Wright, thank you for running the meetings very efficiently. Let's see, my son Hill turns 17 tomorrow, so that's exciting for him. Finance, as, as we mentioned, is fi, is at 5:00, so that's because of the Board of Education, so I apologize about that, and...
Please don't.
And let's see, I believe, I believe that's all I have tonight. I'm not going to give a football report.
Good. Ms. Smith?
Um, I'll give the football report. No, we beat, we beat John Carroll last week, 35 to 7, to go 6-0, so we have the Ramsey game coming up this Friday night at Waldrop Stadium. It is a big deal, they won state last year, so we appreciate anybody supporting and coming out and watching the game, because it's... What time is that? Uh, the game starts at 7:00. 7:00. Mm-hmm, and I will set special issues for 6:15. I only have one referral thing, I have a couple of carryovers, but I think we can probably do it in 15 minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Andrus?
Um, I would like to wish Mr. Wright a happy birthday, first of all. I would like to invite everyone to, this weekend on Sunday, the Homewood Arts Council will be presenting Picking in the Park, as well as the homemade art show. I know that we typically talk about the high school, but I did want to mention the middle schools' cross-country teams. They had the Jesse Owens meet this weekend. The boys are undefeated, they are the best of the southeast. They have won every single meet they have run, they have run against everybody in the state, and now they have run against southwest, southeastern teams. The girls came in second for the first time ever, and were the best Alabama team, they got beat by a team from Tennessee. On the high school side, Will Stone won outright the entire meet for Homewood High School, so we want to wish him congratulations once again, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Ms. Andrus. Mr. Wright?
I can't wait to get my son to the middle school so he can start running. The poor soul doesn't have any choice now.
All right.
And if I could ever get my daughter to do it, too, that would be a miracle.
She's a busy girl, she's a busy girl.
She is. Thank you all for all the birthday wishes and, and reminding me that I'm getting older. Bruce, good to have you back.
Thank you.
We, we are going to have Public Works, I'm easy to put at the, the end, because this one may last, it may last 30 seconds, it may last 15, 15 minutes.
Hopefully not, no, we want it to go on.
So it's going to be between 30 seconds and 15 minutes, would be fine, and, and what, what was the tail end?
The tail end was 6:15 to 6:30.
All right, 6:15, so...
6:30.
6:30, I said 6:15 to 6:30.